Today, the city in which we live guided us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ name, amen.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Newton City Council, October the 12th, 2021. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of September the 28th, 2021 before y'all entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Second motion, a second. I'm going to go back to show of hands on vote call. We did, you know, yea or nay, a voice call because we were on Zoom all those ye- all those years. Seemed like forever. But now that we're all back in attendance, let's go back to hands. So all those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. All right, here we go. Reports from boards and commissions. Today, we've got two appointments. The first one needs to be put on our next agenda, and then Mr. Correctco.
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda today is our annual report from the Tree Commission. Gerald Roberts is here today. Mr. Roberts, how are you, sir?
Doing well, sir. How are you?
Thank you. Thank you for being here and thanks for your service.
Happy to do it. So I'm here to represent the Newton Tree Commission, and we as a community are very fortunate that we value the trees that we have throughout the community. The commission has got several members which represent a wide cross-section across business, sales, legal, education backgrounds. And unfortunately, a lot of our meetings this year have been canceled due to COVID. We didn't convene in September and have got on the calendar to convene for the rest of this year. For the Tree Council, the Tree City Award is in progress. That will be the 32nd consecutive award that we'll get. Mike's in the process of doing a paper work for that. The Plant Newton has got the executive leadership in place, and they are starting this month with their initial meeting and moving forward.
And I would interject there that one of your members, Richard Prang, is one of those board members.
Yes, sir. It's also Delta Airlines is going to be working with the Plant Newton Committee as far as doing some donations to give back to the community. They are in the process currently of going through the 301(c)(1) process. And unfortunately, a lot of the other stuff is just canceled due to COVID. The beautification departments, the holiday social, that's to be, they're in the process of ironing out those details currently. And then again, we had a lot of things that we normally would do that were canceled due to COVID this year. The Arbor Day, the kindergarten tree planting, things like that, that's all been put on hold. We're looking forward to getting back into doing that, you know, next year. The Tree City USA Award, again, that's the 32nd consecutive one we're going to get in. Alternative compliance award was mentioned at our recent meeting. That's something that's going to be going in tandem with the new tree ordinance, the revised tree ordinance. And the purpose of that is to have essentially a secondary form, an appeals form, someone is developing here in the city and they're having trouble meeting the strict letter of the ordinance. It's to give them a process through which to find as much of the ordinance that they can collab with as possible, take some of the heat off of mine. And at our last meeting, the Tree Commission very, very enthusiastically agreed that we would sit as that, follow that back up. That way, there's a process in place. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Council, have any questions, Mr. Roberts? Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, the Parks Commission annual report would be placed on our next agenda. And the next item, E, is a request from the Downtown Development Authority regarding maintenance in public alleyways, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Over the last several years, probably been 10 years or more, but the Downtown Development Authority has been trying to come up with a way to keep the alleyways clean, get a handle on grease, storage that coming out of the restaurants, runoff of water, air conditioning, condensation, et cetera. So this past month, we asked that we send a letter to the city council and staff, and staff has come up with a study of the different department heads and a plea that's just going to explain that. I think this is going to be good for the downtown area.
Absolutely agree, council member. When we received the DDA letter to be put on the agenda, I went ahead and tried to be proactive, and I pulled together critical staff from code enforcement, the courts, the main street sanitation, police department, et cetera. So we actually sat in this room one day last week and had a very thorough discussion about what this request looks like in terms of moving forward. And while we were all certainly in agreement, and I think everyone would agree that it was in that meeting that this is something that would be beneficial, and we wholeheartedly support. We also, because we went through the scenarios of what is a code violation and what is the process, and went through all kinds of different scenarios, and there was discussions that we're probably going to have to evaluate some variety of a few code amendments. For example, we're having some issues with air conditioning condensation, which doesn't seem to be a big deal until the condensation starts providing the mildew, the mold, the growth, the slipperiness, et cetera. But currently, it's actually against the ordinance to put your condensation into the stormwater or the storm sewer system. So therefore, while we may actually take a code enforcement action, their compliance may be against the law. Same as regards to the grease traps. While keeping a grease trap unsanitary is certainly a code enforcement issue, just its simple presence of being in an alley, whether it's publicly or privately owned, is currently not against the code. So what I'm saying is, we're supportive, but there's certainly going to be some processes that we're going to have to come back to this body with the help of our city attorney to present you with some options for some code amendments as we go forward. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we received this report and forwarded to staff, which has already started working on it.
Second. Motion, a second, regarding the Downtown Development Authority and the maintenance of public alleyways. Any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion pass. I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda today, Mr. Phillips, do you have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I don't have anything. Under new business, I am going to ask Mr. John Leggett to come up. I'm going to move item K up to the top of new business. This is a presentation by MSI Benefits regarding the City of Newton Employees Insurance Program. The reason I'm asking him to come up forward today is because he's a Braves fan and he's got tickets. That game starts in less than three hours. So, Mr. Leggett.
I appreciate that. Very nice. I've got some to turn out to you if you guys.
And he is promised to be brave, too. Are there any tickets in these?
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
One short.
I've got three here. Okay. Goodness, John Leggett with MSI Benefits Group. Happy to be here. Glad to be here. We was here last year around this time, as you may recall, that the city hired MSI, believe last June, to represent you all from your employee benefits program. And we were tasked with going to market last year and making, looking at the overall benefits package. And obviously, one of the big change we made was left GMA after all those years, left the fully insured contract, and went to Cigna, hired Cigna to administer the city's health, dental, and vision, and went self-insured on medical. And so the very first slide that you're seeing here, I'm going back in time, and we're looking at 2019 and 2020, but really what I'm focusing on is 2020. You can see the claims. If you look all the way to the right, what I really want to show on this slide is through June of last year, even though these claims were being paid by GMA, the average claim total per month was about 309,000. We saw an uptick towards the end of the year. We can probably blame that on COVID, but you can see that the last six months of the year, we were averaging about 421,000 in paid claims, again, by GMA. And then I'd also like to point out at the bottom there, that the runout, I'm going to talk more about this in a couple of slides later, but that runout of about 191,000 that was paid in 2021 for claims that occurred in 2020 was paid by GMA, not the city. So I'll come back to that. Feel free to stop me there. All right, so slide three is, this is a, I think it's a great breakdown of how the plan, how the plan's been running this year. So you're going to see month by month, January through December, we had data through September of this year. You'll see your total subscribers, that's going to be employees, total members, all the employees and their dependents that are under the plan. Then you have medical claims, drug claims, and the total. So if you come to the bottom of the total, you can see total claims paid under the city's plan this year is just over 2.7 million. In fact, in the fixed charges, administrative charges, subtract out the stop-loss claims, and I'll talk about that. Then you get the total claims is the stop-loss claims minus, or you take the total claims minus the stop-loss, add all that together, our totals, total cost is just under 3.4 million. Employees, obviously, have deductions. You know, the total deductions for the year is around 322,000. You subtract that out, you get a net total of just over 3 billion. So that is the total spend that the city has paid, paid this year for the health claim. You can see PE, PM is per employee, per member, that's how much the cost is per month, and then for the year, and then per member, per member is the PMPM. If you go to the right of that, you're going to see, had the city renewed with GMA last year, the total bill premium, and I'm just doing simple math here, the total premium we were looking at per month was just at about 420,000. So we wanted to do a comparison, and this will be the only year we really do this, because we made that big decision. You can see that had we stayed with GMA and renewed the plans, the total premium would have been just over, or just under 3.8, which is about a difference of about 415,000. So if you're looking for a number, about 415,000 below where we would have been having stayed with GMA. You'll notice we've got some bullets there, the stop-loss. When you go back to the 130,000 you see in stop-loss, right now, the city's contract has $100,000 stop-loss deductible. So the city pays all the claims up to that deductible, and anything above that is paid under the stop-loss, the reinsurance. We've had three claimants with claims above that 100,000 totaling 130,000. So those are claims that the city reimbursed on, which is why we subtract those out. We'll talk more about that, see if there's anything else on this. As far as our contract, so the way this, when you're self-funded, they give us a maximum, the wheels fall off, worst-case scenario, we have protection, right? And then they give us typically 80% of that, which is our expected claim liability. Most employer's budget, off expected, and I think that's what we've done here. If we were looking through September, we were running basically right on par with what was expected for the year. So we're about 81, 81 and a half percent of the maximum planned liability, which is right there on par with what we did expect. Go to the next slide. This is a high-cost claimant report. The three claimants up top are the ones that we've seen above the 100,000 there. So you can see the 24 claimants that are on this report. Even though we have over 600 members under our plan, these 24 claimants have been counting for just over 50% of the claims. Believe it or not, that is common. You see that almost, you know, even when you were self, fully insured, you have the same thing going on, because your claims are your claims. So pointing out some other factors here, COVID, we've had five folks that have made the report there, total of claims above 200,000. And our overall claims on this report, 82% of them are medical, only 18% are pharmacy. And I say that because a lot of times we look at this and we see some really high-cost medications that are driving this, but it's medical, generally medical, you have something, you have the surgery, something happens, it's over and done with, whereas a maintenance medication that's really high-cost medicine can continue to perform forever. The next slide is our three plans. The only changes that we're recommending be made this year to the three plans for Cigna is actually positive one, taking the telehealth co-pay, which was the PCP co-pay, either 35 or 30, and making that no-cost to members. That's a positive change, and obviously now with COVID, more and more folks are using telehealth, so we think that's a change that we recommend making. And then as far as deductions, we still have, you can see below, we have 92 employees enrolled in the bronze, we got 69 enrolled in the silver plan, we got 95 enrolled in the gold. So the majority of the folks still are on the gold. And when we look at it, we look at the breakdown of this as well, the gold is where most of the claims are. Didn't, no recommendations to the deductions on the silver or the bronze, but we're looking to recommend an increase to deductions on the gold by $5 for employees, single coverage, employee-only, and $10 for anybody with employees plus a one-off. And those are the only tweaks. If you take the membership, the enrollment as we have it now, and you go to the bottom and see that the employee total, totals about 453,000, what your employees, City of Newton, are paying annually for this coverage, as it presented here. The next slide has a whole lot of numbers on it. It'd be confusing if you just try to figure it out on your own, so I'm only going to focus on just the top. We'll talk about the bottom a little bit. But as I said, right now, we have $100,000 stop-loss deductible. That is the reinsurance that kicks in with any claim on any member. Once it's $100,000, that's going to pay by Cigna's reinsurance. So right now, the premium for that coverage is about 758,000. We've had 130,000 in stop-loss claims through September. We're going to have more, I'm sure. I don't think we'll hit that number, but they're requesting an increase on that of about 13%. So that premium will go from about 758,000 to 873,000 if we, if we renew with them at that same level. So what we did is we looked at a couple of options. We looked at 150,000, 200,000, 250,000. And obviously, the higher you go, the lower premium you have. And so it's, you talk about possible savings and guaranteed savings. Well, it's a guaranteed savings to, a premium if you reduce the stop-loss, the liability. And so you can see by going to 150,000, that takes the stop-loss premium down to 600, right at 680,000. If we take it to 200,000, that goes to 511,000. And we got to 250,000, we see the biggest drop at just below $400,000 in that premium. So instead of an increase of about 115,000 in the stop-loss, we're going to see a drop of about 360,000. And so that is actually, what we're recommending the city make a move on is the higher stop-loss deductible, like the lower, lower premium. And again, I'm going to touch on these other, on some of the claim totals. But as you, as I stated earlier, claims are the claims. If the city had stayed with GMA, obviously, you'd still have the claims. So the claims are your claims. We think the claims have ran hotter than anticipated, but as you saw in the previous report, I think a lot of those claimants are probably overdone with, and I would expect the claims to run much better next year.
So that is our action item today?
So the action item today, we'll summarize all at the end.
Okay. That's fine.
Claim summary. Again, lot on this page, but I'm going to focus right on this number right here. It's 332,000, right under 4 million. Because, as I started off by saying, that the runout claims for 2020 were paid by GMA, you saw lower totals in the first three months. So what I've done is I've annualized the most recent six months to give us, what's our number, what, how we're really running? And if you annualize that out, it's just below 4 billion of how we're running, or about 332,000 a month. If you come down what's being projected with the Cigna renewal, they're saying we're going to go to about 355,000, or just over, just under 4.3 billion. If you compare that to current, it's like, oh, it's a 23% increase. But realistically, it's not, because we're moving until, to a paid contract, and all those runout claims for the last three months of this year are going to be paid in 2022. So when you look, technically, what we're, what they're saying is, our claims are going to go up about 6.8%. And so if I come back here, just, I did want to touch on one thing on this slide. Go back.
Hey, just real fast, what does PE, PM mean again?
Per employee per month.
Thank you.
So this number here is 310, it was going to go to 381,000. I think the number is 360 is what we looked at this year. So this would go to 374. So if you're looking from a budget standpoint, that 360,000 of what was being funded into the account per, per month would go up to about 374,000. Any questions on all this? All right, go to the next slide. One of the other things we're recommending is that the city change its health wellness program. Cigna has a nice platform, wellness platform. It's referred to as Cigna Motivate Me, and it will be a rewards program that pays, technically pays employees for doing the things that they should be doing. Going and getting their wellness exams, women going to OBQYN, going and getting your teeth cleaned. There's, there's extra things they can do, online coaching, there's challenges and apps and activities, fitness challenges, all kinds of things we'll be able to do under the program. Cigna actually gives us $20,000 in wellness funds that they pay for, up to 20,000. So the money can be pulled from that. And we actually went back and said, double, can you do that? And they said, no, but we'll give you an extra 5,000. I don't think you can do that. So we got it up to 25,000 for 22. So that's a lot of money to have. We hope we use it, right? Because that's a good thing. They did say, if we use the 25,000, they'll give us another 5,000 next year. So there's incentive there to use it all, and make sure that happens. So this would be the new wellness program, if you approve it, but that's what we're going. They do have this health rate pilot program that we're, if we do get, I think, more than 30% of people to participate, which we will, we can look at some discounts next year. We don't have a rule, so we're recommending, recommending that. Next slide is the dental. This is voluntary. This is the only other benefit that's changing. We had a rate cap of 6%, and they actually gave us a 6% increase because the claims did run a little higher there. Again, why not blame COVID, and this, we're all doing nowadays? But I think it was due to COVID. So we're recommending renewing the dental with Cigna, and you can see what the employee deductions go to. So from 1242 to 1316, or family would go to 3740. And so the last page is the recommendations page. To lower the health, we're recommending that we lower that telehealth co-pay from zero, or to zero from the PCP co-pay, and increase employee deduction only on the gold plan. Renew the medical with Cigna under option four, increase that specific stop-loss deductible to 250,000. Implement Cigna's Motivate Me Wellness Incentive Program. By the way, there's a rate cap of 250 for individuals under employees in that program. Renew the dental with Cigna, and that's it. No other benefits are up for renewal this year. That would be the only suggestion.
Any questions, Mr. Leggett?
I had a question. I'm trying to run back to it here real fast. There's a whole lot of information.
It really is.
I have a, just a question. This is kind of more of an inside staff question. Regarding the customer service that we're getting from Cigna, have we, have Cigna met expectations for our staff, for, for claims, for just the overall customer service, for the whole nine yards?
You know, obviously, anytime you make a change from, from any provider to another provider, there's, there's going to be some, some hiccups and challenges. And anytime you go from a fully insured platform to a self-insured platform, there's actually going to be some changes as well. We did have some, some issues on the pharmaceutical side early. We think those have been addressed. You know, not everything's been perfect, but I think everything's been pretty good. I mean, if there's anything that we probably need to consider, and I think I've had this conversation with some of you all, is we do need to probably consider establishing some type of appeals process. Since we are now self-funded, we're the ones that are actually paying the claim, and we may need to consider some type of appeals process for if an employee feels that they have been wrong, or they've been denied coverage, that they would have an opportunity to present something to our particular board that could then make a decision on whether to pay that particular claim. Other than that, I, I, I'm happy with where we're at. I think MSI's done a really, really good job of representing us, just trying to get through the big process of Cigna. Whether it's Cigna, Etna, the Blues, you know, there's going to be some pickup from here and there, but I think the appeals board is probably really the only thing, and we've talked about that.
Do we have, or do we keep total of how many peer-to-piers we have to have, or not have to have, but that we do have?
I'm assuming, we don't as a broker, but I'm assuming if we were to go to Cigna, they could probably give us that number.
Okay.
It's not, it's not going to be a lot.
And how many have been, I'd like to know how many have been rejected? Because I feel, in my case, with my family, we, we need that appeals process. It's, I think it's important.
I can see if they can provide.
And that, would you guess, a dozen, half a dozen?
Less.
I would say less.
Okay, okay. So how long will it take you to put that together and get it across?
Well, we have a recommended process that Ms. Miller has presented. We just need to, you know, fine-tune it for something here, but I don't think it's going to really affect anything that's on the table today.
Right.
Have we been getting any feedback from, from the staff on an anonymous level even to say, hey, you know, this is how I'm feeling about this?
Anonymous level, I know, I believe we know of every situation. Again, you're going to find unique situations, and we had unique situations when we were with GMA where, where people weren't happy with this decision. It's not a perfect work. I mean, there are, I mean, the biggest challenge we had, let's be honest, we went from a zero deductible plan to a deductible that had a $500 deductible, or 250, was it?
250.
250. And people are like, well, I've never had a deductible. Well, we now have a deductible.
Why am I having to pay for this? Because they have to.
Yes, why are you having to pay? Because now you have a deductible. Because, and I've been, as we've been having staff meetings for many, many years, and the staff that are here can testify to this, I've been telling staff for several years that the Cadillac plans may eventually go away because they're cost prohibitive. You know, we were at 100% plan at one point in time, then we went to a 90%. Being able to maintain these plans is very, very costly. And still, if you were to actually compare the value of the gold 90, the silver 80, or the bronze plans, they are very high compared to local government or industry standards. Is that correct, Mr. Leggett?
That is correct. I mean, we could almost relabel the gold plan as platinum.
So it's certainly good plans.
Good. Thank you.
One, one quick question, just to clarify for me, is that top bullet there, increase the, lower the, I'm sorry, it's the one on page five, talking about the. the lower the, I'm sorry, it's the one on page five, talking about the increase the gold ninety deductions. You talk about deductions, five dollars for the employee and ten dollars for the employee.
Correct. Early, the semi-monthly deduction for this is thirty-nine, this is one thirty-nine, and that's one fifty-nine. So one, I'm sorry, the this is one thirty-four, this is one fifty-four.
That's correct.
So the the per paycheck increase would be five, ten, and ten.
Okay, okay.
One more question.
And there is no non-bones, by the way.
Mr. Phillips, if we do go to that appeal process, will that be an in-house appeal process or?
Well, they're actually, the way that the proposal is currently written, as Ms. Miller has presented it to me, there is obligation of the insured to actually submit their appeal initially to Cigna.
Right.
And then once you go through that process and you're denied the coverage for whatever to Cigna.
Right.
Then you would present your appeal to the committee or whomever we designate as that appropriate person along with your backup information. It's just not what I feel like I was denied coverage. It needs to be.
Medical.
Proof of documentation. I I'll give you an example. Several years ago, when we were GMA, we had an employee that was denied life flight coverage despite the fact that they had a stroke.
Right.
GMA at that point in time, you remember this mayor, deemed it non-life threatening and refused to pay his life flight.
Right.
Well, that was absolutely incorrect. So we went to GMA, who GMA was self-funded, we were just weren't.
Right.
And their particular appeals committee certainly made the decision that that should have been covered, and they covered. So that will be a situation to where there's certainly evidence that it should be covered.
Would it cut out that peer-to-peer?
I don't believe that would cut out the peer-to-peer, no.
No, they would have stood recommended staying with that.
What a peer-to-peer is, at times, before Cigna will actually cover a claim, they will request that your medical provider have a consultation with their medical staff. And to be honest, there are times to where our covered medical providers have not wanted to go through the peer-to-peer, which has put us in a in a difficult situation to process the when that peer-to-peer didn't happen.
When our medical, well, any medical provider signs on with Cigna, don't they agree to go through peer-to-peer?
As a contracted provider, that should be part of the process. I don't know that that's part of necessarily part of the contracting, but it is still what we've started seeing certain doctors will charge the patient for the process going to do that. So it really does fall on the doctor. It's the insurance company saying, okay, well, let's have a conversation.
We feel like that doctor should be representing their client, who is the the patient and should go through that process.
Right.
But if not, you know, my advice has been maybe need to find a different medical provider if they're not willing to go through the process.
Sure.
But anyway, I do think there's a need for the process, but.
I I agree, because in my case, it right now, it's kind of dead of water. All right. Anything else from the council? Anyone? Where you're asking us action items, vote on this today?
I have a draft budget that I am putting together, and obviously what you do today.
You need is going to affect your budget.
It's going to affect my budget.
Okay. I hear you.
I have a I got a draft put together, hoping we will go to the two hundred fifty dollar, two hundred fifty thousand dollar stop loss amount.
All right, so how how does your budget look at the incentive with the annual cap of two fifty? Is that your budget item?
Well, we we are utilizing the wellness grant through Cigna.
Okay, so that's all wellness, that's faithful with that, okay.
No.
So you're okay with that?
Oh, there's no expense.
No expense, yeah, that's what I mean.
As a matter of fact, we're removing a hundred thousand dollar obligation with corporate health partners to go to this particular program at no expense. So you could technically say there's a hundred thousand dollar savings.
Mr. Leggett, you, anything else from Mr. Leggett?
Hey, just real fast, the wellness program, that's for the employees only, correct? Not family members?
Correct.
That's correct.
I thought I thought I heard that, just wanted to make sure.
And that's something we can tweak down the road, first year representative.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Enjoy the game.
Go brave.
Go brave. All right, so what we have before us on page ten are these one, two, three, four, five items. Motion, I think, needs to sound like if this is what council wants to do, that we approve the twenty twenty-two recommendations outlined on page ten.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion, questions, more? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by raising their hand. Pose, motion carried. Thank you. Next item, we're going to go back up to item number or letter F. This is a public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage license, Target Store, T twelve, twenty-three, five fifty Bullsboro Drive. The reason is transfer licensee. This is a public hearing. I would ask if anyone would like to come forward and speak to this issue at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is everything in order? All right, is there a representative to hear today from Target? Okay, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. I'll ask for a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the application as presented. All those in favor indicate by raising your hand. Pose, motion carried. Thank you. The next is also a public hearing for an application of alcohol beverage license, Laha Sports Grill LLC, nine forty-one Bull's Borough, Suite B. The reason for this application is a new business. This is distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wine. I'll ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to this issue. Are you here representing Laha? Thank you for being here today. Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Is everything in order? I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a hearing regarding City of Noon and COVID ordinances, Article Five, Section Three, One Ten, Alcohol Beverages, Action for Suspension or Revocation of Business License, B seven one five two, Dunk's Barbecue Kitchen, Steve Stephen Duncan, owner, licensee, and license representative. Who's here today?
Mr. Mayor, Scott Cummins here with Steve Duncan.
All right, if you'll come forward, Mr. Cummins. I'll have you speak first, Mr. Cummins, and then if Mr. Sears has anything, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time today. I'm here on behalf of Steve Duncan. We had an event come up on January third of this year. Steve was at home watching ball games. It was in the evening and ended up going out of his home to go to school and had an accident of what he did. And colloquial with the authorities, gave a blood sample, they accused him of a DUI, and the case ended up being resolved this year. And Steve, as is required by Georgia law, was required to go to jail that night. And when we resolved the case with a negotiated plea in June, he had to go back to jail for a while. That's something that's difficult for people who are not career criminals. Even one night in jail is very difficult, is something that people don't forget. There are also substantial fines imposed, community service, which Steve already does, but he's doing additional community service as a condition, twelve months probation, reports for probation often once a month. So they're supervising to make sure that the like this would ever happen again. He's already done the DUI school, the evaluation. And what I'm here to ask the council to do is to not suspend or revoke his beverage license. This was an event that was completely not connected to Dunk's Barbecue in any way. This was an event that happened at his home, no business activities involved, no prior alcohol violations. I believe he's been complying with city ordinances. And I would ask the city to not revoke or suspend his license. It's part of his business. It's how he helps support himself and his employees. And as I said, he's still on probation with the state court accounting. So there's going to be some of the supervising there. If the city does feel it's appropriate to do some sort of action on this, I would ask for a probation or a period rather than a suspension or revocation of his alcohol license.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Cummins? Ms. Sears, do you have anything today?
No.
On this hearing?
May I make a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion, thirty days probation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I do. I have a couple of questions. What aspect of our hearing, of our ordinance, did this particular thing violate? I mean, is it that that there generally no alcohol violations from, is that a general? Is DUI specifically listed?
Yes, that, in other words, the an application or the applicant for a beverage license, the licensee, and if required, the license represented, must not have been convicted or entered a no-lo to an alcohol violation for a period of five years. Now, unlike some of the other things, that is something council can take into effect depending on circumstances of what the case is. In this particular instance, while this is an alcohol-related violation, even though it is not related to the business, all right, therefore, at the time that the renewal would come up in December, he would have to certify that he had not been convicted or entered no-lo to any alcohol violation. In this particular instance, Mr. Cummins came forward and approached the city, even though the city was aware of the charge, approached the city after the case was settled in state court about going ahead and and proceeding now. So if the council were to issue a probated period, then that would allow him to go ahead and file his renewal, and he would have already taken care of this. Otherwise, you would have been kind of punting it down the road to have to take care of it in January on the renewal.
Okay, so my question then is, if this is something that needs to be in the ordinance then?
Yes.
I mean, because I'm trying to figure out here, you know, it was very quick, no, no real, you know, questions being asked here, but I'm like, what what is the what is the what is the point or what was the reasoning when the council put this together in the first place of including non-business related? I mean, if that's the conversation we're having here, we're saying that it's non-business related.
It's any violation of state law. It's not just, in this particular case, it's a DUI. In other words, if someone committed a burglary or an armed robbery, a felony, so those types, even though they're not directly alcohol-related, they still go toward the character of the person who is being licensed. So what we're doing here is it's not, I guess I explained this earlier, it's we're not judging Mr. Duncan at this point in time. What we're judging is the qualification for the license. So the licensing under the licensing scheme is what we're considering. Now, what so what you're doing is actually you're putting the license on probation for a period of thirty days. As the licensee holding the license, then he is responsible. All right, so it it's the difference here was it goes toward the licensee. So if one of his employees had picked up a DUI and was not the licensee or the license rep, then it doesn't affect it. Because you recall at one time, we did permit or try to permit employees who were serving alcohol, and council adopted and then did away with that ordinance. If that had been the case, then we would be here. The only reason we're here today is because it's the licensee himself who had the alcohol violation. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Pose, motion carried. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of to donate a nineteen ninety-six Pierce Sabre Fire Engine to the Georgia State Fire Academy. Chief, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, I'm here today to seek your approval to donate one of our older fire engines to the Georgia Fire Academy. One of our guys went down a couple of months ago to the class and said the state really needed some new engines to train on. I've had the time speaking with Mr. Phillips that with all the help that we have received over the last three years, this would be a good opportunity to to be able to give back. This this truck has little use, it wouldn't bring much in an auction, and I just felt a show of goodwill, this would be a really good thing we could do for our surrounding counties and cities that have us on. I thought this here today, he doesn't want to address you after your approval or your decision.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and a second, we approve the donation of the nineteen ninety-six Pierce Sabre Fire Engine to the Georgia State Fire Academy. All those in favor indicate by raising your hand. Pose, motion carried. Thank you. Yes, sir. How are you today?
I'm doing great. Mayor and council, city manager, thank you for the time. I appreciate this donation to our fire academy and the thirty thousand firefighters across the state of Georgia. When I took this job four years ago, there was not a driver operator program at our fire academy. We trained everything from boot recruit to fire chief, but we didn't train the folks that drive them to and from the car. That being one of the leading causes of death for firefighters in the United States, I thought it was appropriate to start that training program. We can only do a certain amount of training with the resources we have, and this pump will go to the good use training firefighters throughout the state. So thank you for your time and thank you for your donation.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for all your service. We appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is a consideration of an indication of roundabouts court, the Georgia Department of Transportation, lower favorable road improvement project. You have this before you, Mr. Clark, how are you?
I'm good, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. We are working through our P E Phase One scoping for the improvements to lower favorable road, essentially a widening project. And we're getting to the end of of the plan development process, and one of the formalities is that because we have identified a number of intersections as a preferred ultimate for roundabout, there are a number of communities in this state that aren't familiar with roundabouts like we are, and I think that they are wanting a formal recognition that roundabouts are preferred for this, and we would move with roundabouts. So we we know roundabouts here in Noonan, and I think we like roundabouts, but there's a list of them. Some are in the county, some are in the city, but rather than mess with GDOT's request, I put all of them in there. You can support them all, even though they're not all ours. But they are, I believe it's a formality, and we're nearing the completion of that
Okay, any questions on this?
This is definitely with the understanding that we're only paying for the ones in the city, correct?
Right.
Or or halfway in the city that, you know, because some of these straddle, only the portion that's in the city, we're paying for, just to be absolutely clear.
Two, two are already in existence, the one at the Noonan Center will be widened out, the one at Greason Trail, I don't believe has any changes to it. One is proposed for West Hill, it's still West Hill and Noonan Crossing. That would be wholly within the city's jurisdiction. One proposed for Noonan Lake Drive is wholly within the city's jurisdiction. The rest of them are either completely in the county or shared, and we will more than likely be coming with an intergovernmental agreement with with how we will share the cost.
That's common.
For the design and construction and maintenance of those that will come later.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the consideration.
I I have one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The lighting, is that just lighting that's street lighting type?
There is, it's it's, I guess you could say it's a higher level lighting at a roundabout because of the the nature of the roundabout. We would have, we would, you would see that at Greason Trail and McIntosh Parkway now, and you we would have that same lighting at the Noonan Center. It's just that it's a little bit more clustered so that there's no no shadowing and no confusion and and for pedestrian access through the roundabout as well.
Right.
And there's no question that, I mean, this being a local road, that the city would have the responsibility for for the lighting anyway. So I that part I didn't really understand, but again, they asked that we we showed that We, we showed that we understand that.
Right. And do we, and this is probably for Mr. Phillips. I know we've had lighting from Noonan Utilities to a couple of the roundabouts, and they're going to do the Christmas decorations. Do we need to include that lighting to the center of the roundabout? If we ever do any kind of.
Run the electrical in there?
Electrical service, yes. That's something that we would take up during, during the design process, obviously.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we have one question. As far as the lighting on the, the ones that are in residential areas, are we going to be cognizant of nearby residences and directions, that kind of thing? Directioning, directing the light to the.
I think that's a good question. Yes, and they are focused to the roundabouts. So there shouldn't be any glare there behind them or around them. It should be right on the roadway. It's just, it's just that there'll be a certain location for them because it's round and not linear. You know, sometimes the street light goes, ones on one side, then ones on the other, and they kind of stagger as they go down. This would probably have four, one in each quadrant of the roundabout, and they'll be focused on the roundabout.
Any other questions come in? All those in favor indicate their hand, please. Thank you. Motion carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is a consideration of two MEAG contracts for purchase of reserve and supplemental capacity from the City of La Grange. I think we have a representative today from Noonan Utilities, but it.
Alexis is here. I thought you said you did.
Oh, no. I see her. We've had these in the past, same, same drill as before. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your hand, please. Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda today, under new business, I mean, under unfinished business, a consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, animals. The code of ordinances by deleting Article 7, Dangerous Dog Control, and adopting a new Article 7. As you'll recall, we had this on our last agenda and had several items that needed to be edited and changed and deleted. Back before you, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your hand, please. Posed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is the ratification of the purchase of 5053, 54, 62, and 65 Murray Street. You're all aware that we went through the process of presenting contract negotiating and closing on these properties. Today is our public ratification notifying the public that we did close on these properties. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second that we ratify the purchase of 5053, 54, 62, and 65 Murray Street. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Under visitors today, we have a request from the White Oak Golden Cake Club to set up a kiosk on the Court Square for the annual con sale the weekends of November the 5th through the 21st. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you.